For February 4th, 2014, my name is Rob Garrity. I'm the chairman of the board. To my right is Scott Bugbee, our vice chair. To my left is Jim Leehan, our clerk. We're joined by Jack Hathaway, town administrator, Marion Harrington, executive assistant. And with us today to talk water rates is our DPW commissioner, Mr. Bob McGee. Mr. Hathaway, would you read the agenda for the evening?
I'd be happy to. The meeting of the board of selectmen from Tuesday, February 4th, 2014. First order of business, the water rate hearing at 7:00 PM. Followed by Chief Stone will be here to discuss the police dispatch and animal control budgets. Followed by the town administrator report and early German.
Okay. Mr. Leehan, would you read the notice of hearing?
I certainly will, Mr. Garrity. The Board of Selectmen Licensing Board for the Town of Norfolk will conduct a public hearing under the provisions of Chapter 101 of the Acts of 2004, Section 7, to determine the water budget for FY '15 and set prices and rates for usage of the water system. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, February 4th at 7:00 PM in Room 124, Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., Norfolk Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. McGee, welcome.
Thank you.
So, we yearly, annually have to set a water rate. Tonight's the night where we'll actually vote on that. We've had public comment open for a month and received a handful of comments via email. Bob, would you like to make a recommendation and then discuss your recommendation?
What I have in front of you is a, three different things. There's the water rates, and I'm hoping the next two we can get into, although they weren't advertised. There are a request for a solid waste fee increase, very minor, very, very minor, and a snow equipment, piece of snow equipment that we'd like to add to the already approved equipment rates for FY '14. If you'd like to start with the water rates, what I have here is a recommendation that the board vote to approve no increases to the fiscal year, fiscal year '15 water rates and fees. Just as a bit of background, I put in front of you just something for you to look at with appropriations from FY '11, '12, '13, '14, and our proposed '15 budget expenditures for FY '11, '12, and '13 and the balances. And as you can see, the trend or the subtraction of appropriation from expenditures from appropriations that each year from '11, FY '11 through '13, we've left a balance that would really, there is a balance and it seems sizable to you there, but if you remember just going back, I'll try to be as quickly as possible on this, is that some three years ago, just before we increased the rates, we only had a retained earnings balance of about $50,000. It was, at the same time, we knew that we had to raise the rates back in, three years ago, back in FY '11. It was also our intent, or at least my intent, to not propose any capital projects. Without capital projects, you don't have debt increase, therefore you see a substantial balance in each year. To date, I can report to you that we have certified some $600,000, $3,000 in retained earnings as of the last time it was certified, I think in October or November. And we expect to have that increase and approach this board next year with some capital proposals, which would then possibly, after we do the math on that, may come to you with a request to increase rates in FY '16 to cover those costs. So, at this time, if the board wanted to vote for, unless you want to move on to the next subject, which is solid waste, take them all, three together.
Handle this one discreetly. Any questions, Scott?
The appropriations is what you get for the amount of money you get in water fees, right?
That's our budget, approved budget.
Okay.
Starts with, here goes to the advisory board and is approved at spring town meeting.
Okay. So it was down in FY '14 about 40,000, $50,000, is that right?
In FY '14?
From '13, right? Was that just a typo? Because you have 1.593 and you go 1.543, so they lowered it?
Right.
Okay.
So, there was a, and our budget for FY '14 was requested lower.
Okay.
I mean, if we took town and went through the budgets, I could tell, explain why, but you know, debt went down quite a bit and things like that, so.
Bob, how much of the differential is debt?
How much of the?
The reduction in debt represents, how much of that, 216?
Can I just refer to something so I could be just more accurate than that? And debt service for FY '14 was $484,240.
What was it, four?
$484,240.
Yep.
And I can, I can give you a history of debt if you really wanted.
No, no, I remember, I'm just, I want to know just the reduction in debt is how much from prior year?
From '13?
From prior year.
Yeah, from '13, right. Between '12 and '13, what is the reduction in debt?
Actually, I might have that right here, sorry. FY '13, debt was $566,644. And FY '14 was, again, $484,240.
About $72,000, $73,000?
I don't have the map in front of me, but whatever that is.
Yeah, 78K. Okay, so, I mean, I know that we need the additional earnings for capital projects. I fully understand that, but a 10% differential, or actually a 12%, 13% differential is fairly substantial. And if you take the 78K out, you're back down to FY '111 roughly, give or take a few dollars.
Sorry, I'm, you're jumping ahead of me, I guess. What's the differential that you're talking about?
Well, you've got $216,000 worth of retained earnings.
Yep.
Surplus.
In FY '13. Right?
Yep.
And the differential between '13 and '12 in terms of debt is 78K.
Do you mean '13 and '14?
Well, did you say, I thought, I wanted the difference between '12 and '13.
I gave you 12.
You gave me 12?
Right.
So it's 78K?
Right.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm all for retaining the earnings associated with the reduction in debt. So if I take the 78K away from the 216, it's still a substantial, it's still a 10% number. So I guess I'm asking the question, why we might not want to consider adjusting the rates down?
Well, the idea, again, we added, we proposed no capital projects.
I understand, but you've got $603,000 of retained earnings certified. You've got another 200, and that does, does that include the 216? It doesn't, right? Because that hasn't been certified yet.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Well, that's.
Was it certified?
FY '13 has already been part of the.
Right, it's all, the 600 is all of this.
So, the 608 includes the 216?
Yep.
Okay. Of which 78K is reduction in debt.
Okay.
At least for that year. I'm sure there's some prior, but it's less, obviously. 78.
Well, not really. I mean.
Well, it's a declining debt. I don't think, it's not a level debt structure, is it?
No.
It's a declining debt.
It's a, yeah.
Right, so, so each year, yeah.
Some fall off as they get paid up.
So it's a little less the year before and a little less the year before that.
Is what you're asking, I don't know why we're throwing in 12 here, but is what you're asking, because our debt is falling in FY '14, we can reduce the budget and there I go, reduce the rate structure?
No, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm, I'm trying to, I'm mitigating the issue of debt. I'm taking the reduction in debt out of the equation. And looking at the retained earnings or the balance without the consideration of debt and what that pattern is.
But, but what you don't know is that I'm going to come to you for a million and a half next year.
I do know, I do know.
And, but what you don't know is that out of our capital next year, what I'm going to propose is that we spend retained earnings, the cash from retained earnings, for a couple of items.
I understand.
We've been holding off for, you know, Christmas morning kind of thing.
But you're also reducing your debt at the same time, which is built into.
Debt is going to go up again.
Which is built into your budget.
New sources are how much?
New sources, 1.3 million, maybe 1.4 million.
And we need a new source.
Debt's going to go up.
Yeah.
But that new source.
Well, I've been trying to ask questions for a couple minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Hathaway?
But if debt is going down and our expenses are staying relatively flat, if not.
Relatively flat's fair.
So, so the trend would seem to mean that our other expenses are going up, so I'd be concerned about getting rid of our surplus if expenses are going up, because that, the reduction in debt is giving us kind of a false sense of security here that we're.
No, I'm taking out the debt. If you take out the 78K out of the 216.
The 216 and 78, 216 is just the surplus, Jim.
It's a surplus that includes a reduction in debt.
It's a surplus because there was a reduction in debt.
No, it's a component of it, Rob. It's not all of it.
But if the debt had been what it was the year before, the surplus would have been 300,000.
No.
Because the debt was higher.
The debt was higher and the surplus, the balance would have been lower.
Yeah, balance would have been lower.
Balance would have been lower, Jack, not higher. Look, it's.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry, I said.
All I'm trying to do is negate the debt. Just take out the debt and say, all right, we understand that's a separate component. It is going down rather dramatically at this particular point in time. You originally had that built into your debt, that was originally built into your budget, no different than we do on the regular budget, okay? And we use that differential, if we have a level component to the payment, we use that differential to potentially use more debt.
Yep.
So what I'm looking for is what is that, and I may, this may not be the proper time to discuss it, but there is a number that says if you levelize that component for the last three or four years, just as we do with our regular budget, and you levelize that as a bonded obligation, especially with interest rates still low.
Yep.
Where you're getting to use money pretty cheap. What is the actual differential when that number's taken out? And is that number substantial enough that we could look at reducing the rates? That's my question. You see where I'm going with it?
It'd be a short-term reduction in rates though, Jim.
No, no, not if, I don't know that, Rob. We don't, it may be, but I don't, we don't know the answer to that.
We had, and it's a shame that I didn't print it, but I gave to Pioneer, who is our consultant for, that helps me out with the rates and when I have questions and so forth. I gave him a sample of our capital. I gave you a preview of it as well.
Right.
He put that into his calculations and gave me a spreadsheet and figures I couldn't print it, or I would have brought it with me today. It shows that next year, and this is letting the cat out of the bag, if we were to finance everything that we had there and do some spending out of retained earnings, pay cash for a couple of vehicles that we're looking for, that would have to, the math shows that we need to increase the rates by a dollar eighty-three cents or something like that.
Well, that's my, I guess that's my question. If, if, if you go back, and I'll just take FY '11 for lack of another time, there was a number in there for debt. Let's say it's X.
Right.
There's a number there for debt.
I can give you that too, by the way.
Well, that's okay. And now that number is X minus, it's smaller. That differential, if levelized, because it worked in FY '11, how much additional capital can that, can we borrow to fill that differential and still keep our expenses level? That's my question.
I got you.
And if that number is 500,000 or 600,000 or whatever that number is, then it tells me what the real surplus is.
It was 556, 168.
556?
168.
168, okay.
What do you, you got that?
I'm on the DOR website, pulling up Schedule A.
So my point, Rob, is that that 600, you could borrow hypothetically, and interest rates are lower now than they were then in FY '11. If you, if you were, you could borrow $550,000 and still retain the same level expenditure of, probably even a little bit more, with interest rates being a little lower, adding to the 600,000 you already have. So you've got the leverage without having to change the rates of about $1.2 million of investment. That's my point.
I see, I understand you thinking on that. You know, it's a good question. It's, probably has nothing to do with what we're talking about, Rob. You're talking about the future, what can we do next year to maybe reduce rates?
Well, maybe next year's the time to talk about it, that's okay. I mean, I don't want to belabor this, but, but it's just, you know, I'm sensitive to the fact that our rates aren't low, relatively speaking. And if we can return without jeopardizing what our needs are, and I know we have substantial capital needs, I'm just, I think the debt has to be a component of that discussion because, for twofold. One, how we have historically operated and how we've been able to integrate that into our rate structure. And secondly, because of interest rates.
Do you have surrounding community data on rates?
I didn't bring them with me because I would have done that if I was going to propose an increase, but.
I would just ask that we put it on the table for next year.
Sure.
That we take a good look.
It is, I know that some might advise you, let's say, you're breaking away from a discipline that's not usual. You know, if you wanted me to, if you wanted us to look at some capital, I could come up with 5 million like that. I'm not saying that we do it just for spending or anything like that, but the system needs it.
The system needs it.
I understand, but you're still.
I just wouldn't want to tease anybody.
Even without the reduced debt, you're still bringing in $130,000 at current rates of additional revenue every year over and above your expenditures.
But it is. I mean, when it comes down, I think when it comes time to looking at capital, that's exactly when this conversation gets heavy.
What we've done is create the cushion, so when the new source comes online and you've got to do a line and you've got to do a main, it is not going to be as much of a sticker shock for folks. So I mean, that's, that's what we decided when we started this years ago.
I would just like to sit down sometime and go through that with you.
You got it.
Okay. I will make a motion to, you prepared for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I will make a motion to have no increase to FY '15 water rates and fees.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
I'm good for now.
So the motion is for a FY '15 rate which is equal to FY '14s. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no. The ayes have it.
Did you want to have any, I know Bob.
On the subject of water.
Well, I meant, you mentioned the comments.
Right.
And I just, you know, you want me to just kind of address those?
I'm sorry, I meant to do that, yeah. Would you like to do something?
Just one comment was about the, it's a concern we've heard before, is just, the way our rates are tiered, it's to discourage high volume of use per meter, if you will, or per household. So somebody wrote and said, you know, they've got a house with 10 people in it and they seem to be unfairly penalized. And Bob had responded with, you know, that five, six years ago, we set up the rates to be tiered to discourage users to use a lot of, to prevent users from using a lot of water. And it does not, our system does not, and does not distinguish between a household with four people or a household with 10 people. So, the comment's a valid comment, it's just, but it's a fact of our system, so I don't, you know, there's, we would have to get into a very difficult system to try and figure out persons per household. It's not an easy, it makes it a much more labor-intensive billing calculation, you know? Or we go back to our old system of just having a flat volume of water use. That was one concern. One of the other concerns, and Bob, jump in if I miss something. One of the other concerns was the, oh, the $50 billing fee on the Walpole water. That's part of our, that's part of the agreement with Walpole because we have to process the bills and we also have the, we need to take the legal responsibility to go after billing problems, so that's, fortunately, that's kind of a standard add-on to the bills, is the host community will, will put their typical administration fee on top. Those were the two that I wanted to highlight from the questions. I don't know if there's any more that you want to, there's one about the water leaks, but I think we've.
Well, yeah, about water leaks. Also, the water taste.
Yeah, yeah.
And Bob, I got to admit, this is something I'm hearing in my household constantly, that the water taste has gone down of late. And I know it's subjective and hard to quantify, but if you would ask our wonderful consultants what they might think is going on, that would be great.
Well, I did address it in here. I've, I've been, that question's bounced off me a million times.
The chlorine? Yeah, and it's not a chlorine taste, it's something else. That's what I'm hearing complaints about. I'll have, I'll have people in my house quantify it for you if you'd like.
Okay.
Can send you a note about it.
I definitely noticed the quant, I mean, the chlorine is unfortunate, but it's, but it's.
And we don't, we're still under like deprobase, right? We have no really chance to get.
And I don't think it's coming off. That's the feedback that I've heard.
It's imposed by the DEP.
Forever.
And I don't think there's too many communities without it. We fight it with them, we ask them again to reconsider, and the best we can do is give it the lowest dose legally that we can give it. And, you know, it's kind of a funny thing, I don't think there's anything else in our system, chemical-wise, that would create the taste, other than if there's a shakeup in the system and maybe some minerals are getting in, or iron or manganese or something like that. The dosage of chlorine is added at the, at the raw well, at where it comes out of the well. And as it comes up to the well and it goes into our distribution system, it goes to the households, and then it continues on and fills our standpipe, our, our tanks. At nighttime, it goes more. So if you're to the left or the right of the way the water's flowing, you might get it and you might not. Either way, it's proven to be, it's not unhealthy, it's far better than, than what could happen if we didn't have it. The other chemicals that we have in there is like polyurethane, polyurethane, yeah, right?
Great.
Polyortho. It's a good.
Polyphosphate, maybe?
Polyphosphate. And orthophosphate and sodium hydroxide. And that's, these are things here that sequester the iron and manganese and also line the inside of the pipe. It's kind of like a food-based type thing, but you don't taste the food in it, it's tasteless. And the only other thing we do is, coming out of the Spruce Pump Station, we have a UV system to sterilize and disinfect. It doesn't exist at Gold Street, so.
Okay.
You know, we can test it and you're going to find out that a better job than what I just explained is what you're going to get back.
All right. You have a recommendation on the roll-offs? What about the normal stickers and everything else?
We're not looking for any increase, rate increase right now for stickers or any other fees, other than just a minimum, a minimum fee for the, where am I, in the?
Number two there.
In the construction containers. So, right, if I just read this, yeah, that's all the way, so the board vote, if we could have the board vote to approve a one-ton minimum tonnage fee for all rental containers in FY '15. And as a bit of background, the solid waste division charges customers $200 per rental container plus a tipping fee of $85 a ton per disposal of construction demolition materials. And it's only on occasion, maybe four times a year or something like that, that we have a container that will go to the scale and be less than a ton. And we'll have to figure out the fraction of what that is.
Okay.
It's, it's maybe not even worthy of bringing up, but our people in the office are.
No, let's, let's give you some backup on that.
That's fine with me. So if you're just saying that it weighs less than a ton, you want to just make it short, $85?
Right.
Make it easy, simple. All right, so do we have a motion to?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion for a minimum one-ton tipping fee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. And then what's the change on the snow rates?
Well, again.
Is this a new piece of equipment?
It is.
We haven't had before?
We've, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but, because I'll jog your memory just by saying that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
No, no, I mean.
We'll just do whatever you say then, you know?
I didn't want to bore you with a, with an extended explanation, but, you know, we, it goes right back to, we have, we've, we've got a new school online, we've got new cobbles downtown, and we're looking, we're always looking to test new equipment and new cutting edges, and this year we're putting rubber edges on our cutting edges instead of steel, which is going to help survive hopefully the cobbles. We have a new school with new curb lines and concrete curb and so forth at the Freeman. And so we clear the parking lots and we have these push plows, and they have the rubber bottoms too, so it's, you know, I put in here how it, it's, it's less damaging. This particular piece of equipment is one of three. It spans up to 16 feet. It pushes snow and it follows the curb line where it doesn't leave a windrow.
Right.
And we've tested it out and we've had it, you know, a few snowstorms this year to test it out and some big, larger snowfalls, and it's worked out just wonderful. So what we do is like, on the new school, we have all that concrete sidewalk that we don't want anything to happen to. We have a little piece of equipment that pushes out into the street. The push plow comes, takes it around the corners and the turns and finds a way to get it out to the back of the school where it can be deposited, and you don't see the result of the windrows. We go from there to the H-L of day, we go down to the, well, we get the transfer station that we need to clear, and that gets done in like 45 minutes. So it's just a wonderful piece, it's the largest piece we've ever had, therefore we're asking for that one piece for a larger rate of $125 an hour for that.
Do you have any data what they get in other towns for this piece?
Well, I think you could probably go to Logan Airport and see it at about $300 an hour. I think if you went to parking lots in the private industry, where it's probably around $200 an hour.
In other words, this is a reasonable rate?
It is.
Okay.
And the benefit, and what's going on is this particular contractor is just fed up going anywhere else out of town with it. He's in town, he's got three pieces of equipment that he can use with us. He stays local and it's, it's worth it to him and really worth it to us.
So moved.
Is this our top rate? Sorry, second.
That's the highest piece of equipment.
And what's the next, I mean, just a point of reference for people, what's the?
Only $119 for the equipment size lower than that.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded.
$9, not 19.
For this exorbitant rate, for this spiffy, fantastic piece of equipment.
Efficient, that's what I was going to say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no. The ayes have it.
I think one of the selectmen was talking about getting one of those snow melter things earlier.
Oh, Snow Dragon.
Snow Dragon.
No comment.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the water rate public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank Bob, Mr. Speaker.
Good luck tomorrow.
I just, no, because Marion is in mind. Also, yeah.
Practicing.
There you go.
Big cheers to Phil. No pun intended.
You guys got a, you guys got a sense of, is Newton making any plans for closing at all tomorrow?
I'll find out at 5:30 in the morning.
They're probably, they're so good, they're probably preparing for Christmas.
They're just going to melt them. We are ready. We are, they're already plowing.
Yeah, just getting the road prepped.
Just getting.
Aiced up. You should just put the snowmelt on.
We're doing the pre, the pre-treat stuff, so the snow bounces off. That's what the fleet's going to do. Actually, they don't do that.
So you're going to get trouble.
Mr. Stone, chief, how are you?
Welcome.
Come on down.
I just wanted to say you look really nice tonight.
Thank you. Hey, for looking for a job, thanks for helping me with the water.
That was pretty good.
Advanced copy.
Advanced copy, all right.
He'll give you a call about 10 o'clock.
Yep.
Chief, how are you?
Doing good.
Excellent.
You're doing good, like Superman.
Right to it. We, obviously, you've all already had a little action over the weekend, and like last Friday, so we're on top of it. We're investigating. Charges have been brought, and we will have a presence at the school. Rent them all have a presence at their school, at the King Philip School there. There are all kinds of conditions in place, so we're not expecting to have any difficulties, so.
Pretty good.
Has the firearm been confiscated?
They were picked up today. So, to the best of our knowledge, has been put to rest, so. Not much more we can do about that. Okay. As you know, I got four budgets. Jack said I had to keep this just under two hours.
That's good.
Perfect.
I got this all night.
So I hope, and I got a slideshow that'll take another hour, but don't worry about it.
We do a site visit, too?
Yeah.
Which site are we going to?
That's what we'd like to go to. This is animal inspector.
Is there any particular order to these?
I'm going to go with the short ones first.
Okay.
So that when he runs out of time?
This is about as short as you can get, Chuck.
Well, yeah, so, I'm told I have to have five copies, you have five.
And how much do we typically expend out of this account?
Out of the animal inspector, you expend it all. It's more of a stipend than a salary.
Oh, okay.
Whatever happens during the year, but there are a couple of things that do happen on a regular basis during the year. One is that he's required to take account of all the farm animals in town sometime between December and January, turn that account in. He does it.
Yeah.
We just met with him the other day, Jack and I, and it is done, and it's been turned in. Other one is for any animals that need to be quarantined, he's responsible for that.
Okay.
Some other side things, but those are the two main ones during the year through, but $2,300, not, nobody's going to complain about how many times he has to go out, or how much we pay him, so.
Okay.
Some of the expenses, you know, for obvious things, I list them there, but any legal fees or funds used to, that need to be used to quarantine those animals, that's what's done. Any questions?
No.
So far, so good.
Told I have to hurry, so.
No, no, that was-
Hard to, hard to challenge a one-liner.
I know. Have you thought about bonding it with the current interest rates?
You get that down about 195, Chuck.
Oh, sorry, yep.
That means the expense-
More control.
It's like you only brought four, Marion.
I'm still trying to figure out how they validate the 40-year light bulbs.
Animal control, as you see, there's a current grade step moving up as allowed by the union contract, collective bargaining agreement, however you may want it. That's reflected there. Animal control has been very busy, she has calls all the time, there's always things going on. As you well know, at the fall time meeting, you purchased a truck, so that she'll be able to pick up all the animals in something that's more tuned towards animal control activities instead of police activities, where she's using an old police cruiser. So it's tough to get a deer in the backseat of your cruiser, so.
I think we're still a couple, we're still a few months away from delivery, right?
Yeah, it was predicted at four months in the middle of December when we ordered it, so we haven't seen it yet. Anything you want to know about animal control, other than that?
Good.
Wow.
Are you going to, are you going to auction the animal control car?
I'm not sure anyone would ever pay for it, but-
Recreation's looking for another vehicle, Rob. What do you think?
So we could trade.
You got any kids that are looking for a car, Rob? I'm sure you can put in a bid, but I don't think they want it. It's got too many miles on it.
The seal on it?
It's been towed in too many times. It's really not much of a car. Somehow, thank goodness, Paul Vito has kept that thing going long enough for us to get to the pickup truck, so.
You started off well, with five copies of everything, and then the last two budgets.
The budget's lower. The budget's lower. The expense budget's much lower.
I can pass it to you, I can go with the expense. This is just dispatch.
It's probably in this pile.
I can make a copy.
You can get mine, I mean.
It started off well.
It's-
He's already throwing the jabs.
No question. I think it's personal.
Probably is.
What'd you do to them?
Oh, don't ask.
Goes back in 19 blah blah blah.
1964.
At the Johnson House, what?
1918.
It was owned first by the Sampsons. They were the first couple in the world.
We got, we got made of that one.
Eight, oh boy.
Yeah, we got extras. That's our all year.
See, ask and thou shalt receive.
Okay, so, dispatch.
What would you like to know? We have four full-time dispatchers. We are, as you know, responsible for dispatching police, fire, and sometimes DPW during snow events. Ambulance is also part of that group. They are required to dispatch using the EMD principle, and they do. The training is part of that, the line items that you see in there. It is up a little bit of money, mostly for salaries that they're entitled to. They're not in a collective bargaining agreement, but they, dispatch is not in a collective bargaining. But, you know, they follow a program for raises during the year, so.
There's a $600 increase in your, about $500 increase in training.
Well, all that has to do with the courses that we now have to take for EMD.
I get the previous.
You see it in training, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Part of that has to do with the type of courses we have to take for EMD, and we have to pay for them, so it's not, they're not free, so.
Okay. And then, the growth in the, the other side, the personnel side, is that all raises, or is there something else in there?
Well, I think you find it to be the standard percentage raise that, that the classification schedule calls for, and-
So the $14,000 is just the creep on the personnel? All right, any questions?
Nope.
There are some, we can go into it, we can go into an executive session at some point, but there are some items related to their staffing level that will enter into the bargain.
Correct discussion.
Yeah.
Oh, this one has a staple in it, and it's not good.
Because it's three pages.
Marion, I think you're good on this one.
Perfect.
Well, as you know, last year, we started 18th police officer on the department. First time we've ever had 18. It was started on January 5th, I believe it was a Sunday, because it was a Sunday in January.
Yes.
And part of the increase that you might see there is for the second half of that salary for the year, so. That's one part. And one of the things that I have been telling you over the last couple of years, and predicting, is that all of our officers are, what I, I'm going to say, getting long in the tooth, but they're getting higher up on the classification schedules.
You know they all got guns, right?
So do I.
And tasers.
They do.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're getting, they're maturing force with higher salaries.
Higher salaries, but everybody's winding down to their final three, so this is, I had three move up to that this year, one last year, and we have quite a few before that, so. So you know, we should be seeing some relief in the next few years, but it won't be in the next couple, as far as the salaries go, so.
Relief, but also bringing in a lot of new people, a lot of training.
Well, yeah, at a lower pay grade to start, of course, but.
There are some, yeah, there are some, definitely some challenges with retirements, too, because we get, if they have accrued benefits, that's a challenge for us.
All right, we have to implement collective bargaining agreement as it's, as it's written, so during that one year, that they all, it seems like four of them are going out in the same year, which is not my wish, but-
Now, why is maintenance, vehicle maintenance up?
Nothing is cheap.
Yes.
Okay.
But we are doing a good job replacing your vehicles, getting rid of old lousy ones.
Okay, and yes, that is, that can be true, but unfortunately, we're still reeling from the effect of the years, cars that have 140-something thousand on them. We still have a few of those left, and will have, even though we've replaced three one year and two this past year. So that's kind of where we stand with that. We can try, and we can go back in, if you'd like, at the town meeting and ask for more money, but I don't like to come back in at town meeting and ask for money. I can make a prediction that what it's going to be to get through the year, and if you agree with me, then I won't be back in. If you don't agree with me-
So you guys don't hot-seat your cars?
Excuse me?
You do not hot-seat your cars? Your cars are not three-shift cars?
No. Not all of them.
No.
I mean, we only have two on the midnight, so they can't all be, you know, running three shifts.
So how many miles a year are you doing?
Oh, probably 40 to 50 every year. The one good news that, and I think I sent it to you directly, was that we went from like 11 and a half to 15 gallons, miles to the gallon. And I think that's a good number that the townspeople could be happy about, on the new cars. The other ones are still getting the 11 and a half, and-
I thought it was actually lower than that.
What was that?
Thought I remembered eight and 9.4.
Well, it depends on if that's one of the cars that has to be on all night. You know, at certain times of the year, like this time of year, especially during the snow event, they do, they outrun most of the night. We don't shut them off, so that they'll be clean and ready to go. Just can't hop in a car that's freezing cold and there's glaze on the window, so it just doesn't work too well. And we don't have a garage, as you know, a heated garage.
I've heard such tales.
Unfortunately, that, that is a problem, so.
Okay. Questions?
On the communication? Yep. Chief, that's like a 20% jump. Is there something you were, that's just repair and maintenance, it's not a replacement, like going from 20 to 24?
Yeah, I mean, some of the costs for, for the laptop modems are, are a little bit higher. That's communications.
Laptop modem, aren't they wireless? Okay.
Well, yeah, but-
Like, mean, new laptops?
You still have to pay for the air card.
Okay.
And unfortunately, that's not really cheap, so, but you, they're out there running plates and stopping cars all.
So you run your laptop Wi-Fi off the, it's a cellular thing, off a commercial cell? We don't have the capability through police dispatch to carry a data stream, too?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Some new technology, you can-
It's almost like some sort of public access TV, you should get something from our cell tower carriers here, like, you know, puts on the towers here. They should donate the time tubes, they should donate the airwave stuff to the police to do that. You know, I mean, just as in-
And that would have been part of the negotiations for when the cell tower was allowed to come in, but, you know, if we had, so the police department and fire and highway all need, you know, cell service and modem service for free, and that's not what happened, so. You do have to pay for it. I guess have, they have a couple now, and they probably have a couple more modems in use later on, so.
Mm-hmm.
But we have more, because we have, each of the cars ready to roll, and it does not work moving the laptop from car to car to car, and the air card from car to car, because it typically gets broken.
So how many frontline cars are you running?
We have nine.
Nine.
Marked units, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, well, I'm actually, how many are rolling every day?
Oh, probably six on the day shift, and it could be marked and unmarked, and four on the afternoon shift, two on the midnights. That's pretty much a standard.
Okay. Any questions, Tim?
No.
Anything? Anything else?
That's it. Capital.
Cruisers.
How many of the, how many of the old Fords do you still have?
How many of the what?
Of the old Fords, five?
Five.
Five or six, yeah.
And I think-
A couple of unmarked.
I think they all have over 100,000, do they not?
No, not all of them. There's, there's like one or two, one, one of the unmarked doesn't have it, a couple of the-
But the marked, the black.
Probably the only thing I didn't bring with me, but they, they don't have, they aren't all, they aren't all over 100,000. There are a couple of them, like the deputy's car, it's not over 100.
But the standard patrol?
Yeah, they're all creeping very close, if not well in excess of. In fact, one of the, one of the units, we had to actually put up the highway and leave it there, because it needed about 3,000 miles worth of work.
Right, I remember that.
Brutalized our vehicle maintenance budget, so we just said, it was slated to go, it's going earlier.
So what, what do you project the life expectancy of those four to five cars is?
Well, we typically try to keep them for five total years. We've been getting more than that, because the one that we just parked is a 2004, so we're on 14. Another one is a five that we're getting rid of this year, so we're, we're in year 14, so. No. Two, it's 2004.
It's 10. He meant we're in 14, 2014.
Oh, okay.
I believe that's what the chief meant.
I just, my math's not as good as yours. I'm- Well, I should have said 2014, that would have been much clearer, but yes, 2014, and they were, it's a 2004 and '05 they were getting rid of this year, so.
Okay.
Those are the ones for the miles, and they're in the 140-something plus, 40 and 40 and 40.
So over the next three years, you're going to need at least two or three cars.
Yes. So, and no preuses.
And what's the warranty you're giving on these things?
What's the warranty?
Yeah.
Well, they give you 100,000 miles, they give different options, depending on how much you want to pay.
Right.
But typically, you get somewhere between 70 and 100,000 miles.
You've never got more, you, you never have more than three on a shift rolling, right?
We have, we never have more, no, during the day we do.
You have four guys?
Four uniformed, marked cars, yeah.
Okay. And you've got five new ones right now? Five new cars?
I have three. I have two on order. Two are on order, yes.
Yeah, you just bought three.
Yeah.
Now, when you talk about leaving cars on overnight, what are you talking about?
Leaving them on means that typically, they're being driven around the town.
Okay, okay, that's, that's-
In the snow event that you're going to see later tonight and tomorrow morning, they will be left on to keep the windshow warm and clear of snow.
They will be left on sitting in the parking lot?
For if they go into, write a report.
Okay, all right, all right.
Check in with dispatch, use the facilities, any of those things that normally happen on a shift.
Okay.
In essence, the car runs all night.
On a night like tonight, it definitely will.
Okay.
I think that's the thing that sometimes is misleading with mileage. Is that if you took it in terms of the amount of time that car's running on average for a normal year.
Right.
It's a lot more than what the mileage actually indicates.
More miles on them, pedometer will.
That's ours.
But some will get less miles per gallon.
Right.
And that's depending on, and the midnight shift typically is the cars that will have less miles per gallon, so if that explains that at all.
No, yeah, I've seen some figure like a cop mile's worth, eight miles or something like that, because the cars do idle so much. Plus, they're driven aggressively.
And that's why it's better to keep them warm, because if you drove your own car aggressively cold, you're gonna destroy it.
No, my just, my one, my thought process is if we were to hot seat the five cars, so a car is constantly out, and I know police departments do this. So, there are, you know, this, so three cars will be in service all day. Now, granted, you're gonna run through them in three years.
Or less.
But, well, I would hope you can get three years. Particularly with the warranty that you're gonna buy on it.
But if you're putting all your miles into three to five cars, then you're not, they're not gonna last as long.
But you're gonna have.
What we've been doing.
Five frontline vehicles instead of nine.
What we've been able to do, because we've kept cars longer, is to spread out the mileage just by having groups in each of the cars.
Right, but you got nine cars worth of maintenance instead of five cars worth of intensive maintenance. I, you know, I just, it's, I mean, it's not, at this point, it's not a realistic thing to.
All right, well, looking at the vehicle, where's the vehicle maintenance, Rob? I have 25 this year. Car's gonna cost you, well, I think I have it in for 47, so. So, that's almost two, you know, two vehicle maintenances. We can keep all of these cars going for this price for a year, but if you want to spend 47, five, that many more times in two or three years, then I think it's probably gonna end up being, we can do a math exercise on that.
My police force doesn't have to complain about the crappy cars they have.
Over in the other town?
Three-year vehicles.
Huh? In another town?
No, 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 this police force in here, where my chief comes in and complains about the vehicles. So, if he's in, if my entire force is in three-year-old cars, there's gonna be less complaining about the vehicles. The vehicles will probably be more reliable, and they'll be out there, but it's, you know.
That's a yes and a no, only because they're gonna get more wear and tear with so many different drivers driving them with, and more miles and hours.
There's that argument too.
But if you're putting, if I misunderstood you, correct me, you said you're putting 40,000 miles on a car a year now.
Because we're spreading out that mileage amongst all of those cars.
If you put a.
Are you saying so a 24-hour car would be 120? Is that your question?
That's my question.
Yeah, would a 24-hour car be 120,000 miles?
Probably, very likely.
Really?
Yeah.
Even if it's 90 or 100, I mean, that's still, so you're gonna end up with a, what was the word you used, crappy car after a year, I mean, or a year and a half?
Well, typically, another town, Rob, what I find is that those people buy a couple of cars or lease a couple of cars, two to three, and they trade them in a year later. They only put 70,000 to 80,000. They may at the most get two years out of them. I don't, I, when I, when you said three years, I just kind of, right away, thought that was unrealistic, but you might get two at the most, but you're gonna, at the tail end of that, things stop breaking down. Every, everything that could break down will break down in those final years. And we've been doing transmissions and rear runs lately, and it's a very expensive process.
Yeah, which is why I want to get you out of those cars that are breaking down over time.
So, we're on a plan to get back to that. If we just maintain the schedule of threes every once in a while, twos, that will do that. And if we can stick to that, and the finances of the world will help us out a little bit, we'll be fine. We've been just going through a rocky five-year stretch, or maybe a little bit longer, so we're hoping to get through, you know, the next couple of years.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
And we're right on time.
Very good. Thank you, chief. All right, what else is next? Jack?
I would like to talk to you some more about the budget. Julie has been doing a tremendous amount of work on the budget this year. Unfortunately, she went home sick today.
Thanks, Chuck.
But she's compiled all the budgets, with the exception of the two school districts. We have KP's initial request. We're expected to get the elementary school in the next week or so. But then we'll be able to tell you kind of where we are at a enterprise level.
We could, is it next week we're meeting, doing the interviews?
Yeah, it's next Thursday, week from this Thursday, 13th.
We could stick, Mr. Chairman, we could stick a half an hour onto that agenda, because we don't meet again until late February. Just to go over that first draft of the budget.
I'm available to do that, it's up to.
Scott?
I'm available. Your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Stay as long as needed.
The backend. Yep.
We've had, well, it's not, I mean, I'm not, just as a commentary, we've had extremely high incidence of sicknesses this year, just in town hall, family too, but bad year for the bug.
Bad place to visit.
Yeah. But Julie has been doing a great job with that. We have negotiations underway with the administrative union going on. Scott's met with them, Scott Dragdon. He's gonna meet with me probably on Thursday, and then we'll get together with the union again next week to kind of compare their requests and our thoughts on where we're going. Not really formal negotiating yet, just kind of exchanging ideas at this point, so I'll give you an update in executive session as to how that's going, and then you can give me some direction on how we close that. The rec, we met with today, Regional Communication Center, we're still moving forward with that. Some folks met with the 911 administrators on Friday. Went and talked to them. I gave you a quick update on that, I think, two weeks ago, but talked to the 911 folks about the potential change in venue. So, we're looking at a facility on Industrial Drive in Rhythm. Really because the, I hate to use the word, the program requires six to eight stations for, of dispatchers, and the combination of that room that's available in Rhythm, but really more so the need for IT room in the back. We just don't have the space at the public safety building. So, you know, we started talking about doing an expansion on that building, but they have some wetland challenges and other challenges that I think will be expensive, to put it mildly. So, we're looking at this Industrial Drive tax possession piece of land. It's a steel structure with a, you know, aluminum skin. It's just a no-frills type building that would just need to be, the skin would need to be replaced, and, you know, obviously, everything except the steel need to be replaced. So, we're having the engineers look at that over the next two weeks, and then on the Tuesday, the 18th, we're gonna meet again and review that. And then we're having 911 folks come in on the 4th to kind of get their blessing that, you know, the grant money can still be used for that. So, I think we'll start making, if we can get that on board with the 911 folks, then we'll start making, you know, we'll start going drafting the real schematics and, which will be kind of light for a facility like that. And then we have a, what they're saying is a six to nine-month build-out, but hopefully won't, that's kind of a worst-case scenario. And then we'll be in operational mode, hopefully not in the too-distant future. The building is about, it's 11,000 or 12,000 square feet, and we only need about five, so there's plenty of room for either other uses, or what we're kind of thinking is for future expansion, start bringing in other towns. So, that's what we're gonna try and sell to the 911 folks, is that this could be a real hub for a lot of, you know, a big regional communication center. That's what I got today.
Okay.
Looking forward to the interviews next week.
Interviews with planner. Screening committee bringing forward three finalists. Scott, nice ad on that screening committee, and three, we got three excellent choices. Let you make your selection.
Great.
Outstanding.
Couldn't be happier. All right, no other business before the board. I move that we adjourn this evening to meet again, well, next Thursday, the 13th. What's that?
I think starting at six.
Six o'clock. Thursday, the 13th, six o'clock, here in this room. Second. Motion's been made. Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. The ayes have it. We stand adjourned to meet next Thursday.